Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Zoning Board of Appeals meeting in Plymouth, Massachusetts, America's hometown. Tonight, we have three cases and a little bit of other stuff that we will be discussing afterwards. And our first case is case number 4171, and I would ask the clerk to read the legal ad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case number 4171, the Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 26th Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. on Monday, August 4, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. to hear the petition of Dominic and Judy Nikatera requesting a special permit required per section 203.9(c) to alter a pre-existing non-conforming structure to convert covered porches to living space additions on the property at 79 Manomet Ave., shown as parcel 048049190000 of the assessor's map dated January 1, 2024 in the R2O-S zone. The petitioner or his or her representative or any other person interested and desiring to be heard on this request should appear at the time and place designated.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Seated on this case will be Mr. Leary, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Connor, and myself. Who will be representing for the record?
Yes, Mark Flaherty.
Who?
So, so to keep consistent with trying to fake out the board, the Regerios who are in the second row on the right purchased the property from, I think it's the Nikateras. And so we're really, I'm representing David and Tammy Regerio. Their builder, John Duggan, is in the first row. And so just to be able to set the record straight. So the property lies along Cape Cod Bay, as some of the board members might have seen on their way down to see their lovely post office box down there. It's a two-story house with four bedrooms. On the ocean side of the house, there's an existing wraparound porch. It's, they have a beautiful spot. The wraparound porch has been well-served. The porch on the south side, on the south side, the plan that's up in front of you, the north arrow runs up and down the plan. On the south side, the wraparound porch is six feet from the property line. And what the Regerios want to do is hire John to convert a portion of the wraparound porch into a living space. There is a small little portion of the wraparound porch that's going to also have a second-story addition. So the living space and the proposed addition, rather than being six feet off the property line, is going to be seven and a half feet off the property line. So therefore, we need a special permit from the, and so we have, it's, we'll need a special permit for the side yard relief. We've gone to the neighbors. We have letters of support that we've provided the zoning board of appeals. And in each one of those cases, the one in the north and one in the south, particularly the south is being the most germane, they're supporting the project as well as a person in the north and a person across the street. We have gone to conservation. We have an order of conditions approving the project. We went to the planning board. The planning board voted five-nothing in terms of supporting the special permit. The addition itself is going to be supported on helicopiles rather than a concrete foundation. There will be a lot less impact to the bluff with the helicopiles than would be a concrete foundation. And so all the, all the, any materials would be brought to the front yard with a dumpster. And so it's, the Conservation Commission has given its set of conditions, no issues, nothing too significant in the order conditions. So between John, the builder, and myself, we're happy to answer any questions. The Regerios also could be called upon if needed. Thank you.
Preliminary questions from the board? Yes, David?
How will you be handling roof drainage? I didn't see anything on the site plan for whether a dry well or two.
I have a note, David, that all roof layers directed to hollow dry wells. Note number eight on the site plan.
Okay. But it's not shown. But you have it covered by note?
Well, it's not shown, but, you know, where the builder decides to put the hollow dry wells, that's going to be up to him. But we're happy to show you where, I can speculate where some of the dry wells might go, David, if that's the case.
Well, I just was thinking, being as close as it is to the bluff, you know, I have a concern about erosion and would like them to be positioned so they're at least likely to affect erosion of the bluff.
Well, the commission, the Conservation Commission accepted this plan, and we're happy to provide Denise and the board with kind of an updated plan showing where, I'll work with John, showing where the dry wells could go, David.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, you gave us a lot of fun earlier yesterday.
At least we got that figured out. Okay, so now the intentions on this, I know the place next door is a Airbnb. They're not intending on doing that, are they?
No, this is their full-time living. They've moved here.
Okay. Because otherwise, I mean, you know, I mean, they could pull cars on their lawn, but if it was somebody else with that U-shaped kind of watch people in if you have four bedrooms. You see what I'm saying? That was one of my questions. And Leach and Field, that's H20?
Leach and Field's H20 because it's in the driveway, yes.
Right, okay. Just checking to make sure. Then, and from what I can see on the plan is the second floor, the addition that's close to the line's only one floor, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
And the second floor is just on the front?
On the rear side, yes.
Yeah, okay. Other than that, I think I'm also, I had the same question as Dave with the roof drains. Other than that, and the photos, where you had us going around.
Let's talk about the photo.
Jesus, I'm telling you.
Which one of you would like to start?
Geez, I'll tell you. But other than that, no, I think I'm fine.
I was just trying to keep you guys on the toes, that's all.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? I'm going to open this to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of this petition? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back for board discussion. Jason, is there anything you would like to add? Okay, thank you. Up to the board. What do you want to do?
Well, okay, so, you know, again, I'll make the motion, but I'm.
There's only one condition.
Right, only one condition. But I mean, other than that, and I don't think we need to add any unless, or you want to add in that they come back in a formal for the drain or it's on the plans written.
No, it's probably fine, covered by note.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve case 4171 with one condition.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve case 4171 with one condition. All those in favor? Where the board is.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a nice evening. Thanks.
The motion passes. Thank you. Goodbye. Bye-bye. Call me, Kevin, late in the week. Thank you. All right. Moving on to case 4173, Michelle Cowan, 6 Resnick Road, Unit 18. I will have the clerk read the advertisement, please.
Case number 4173, the Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 26th Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. on Monday, August 4, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. to hear the petition of Michelle Cowan requesting a special permit required per section 20512 LI, use table D27 to allow a personal service establishment use in the light industrial zoning district on the property of 6 Resnick Road, shown as parcel 103000014K127 of the assessor's map dated January 1, 2024 in a, probably should say, light industrial zone. The petitioner or his or her representative or any other person interested or desiring to be heard on this request should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you. Seated on this case will be Ms. DeLeary, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Connor, and myself. Who will be presenting?
Hi, I'm Michelle.
Go right ahead.
So I would like to have a special permit to conduct personal services in a light industrial area for a manicure studio. We'll call it a studio since it's just me.
Okay. Questions for the board? Go right ahead, Michael.
Mine, I guess I'll, seeing as nobody's represented, I'll address it. Mine, I guess I'll, seeing as nobody's representing, I'll address it to Jason. Jason, in this location, this area that she's using, is that already petitioned off? Is it already like an office? In other words, would it be inspected or, at least when you guys go out there, be inspected to make sure there'd be smoke detectors or whatever they need, right?
Yeah, we, we've done zoning only, so we haven't had a building official go through, but we can certainly do that at the board, the board's discretion. This is an existing space that I believe that she only intends on just doing, yeah, doing painting and normal, you know, repairs. No, no triggering of construction permits. And the space would not normally trigger an annual inspection. So, unless the board has that discretion and wants to include that, we have no cause to go back in and do those inspections.
But if we, if I was to make a motion on that, you could.
You bet.
I mean, it's only, my main concern is nothing, it would be the owner of the building was, okay, it's, it's petitioned off. When was the petition that, is there smoke detectors in there versus the rest of the building?
Yes, it's true. There should be, as an example, at least exit signs that are illuminated, backup lighting systems that are illuminated, fire extinguishers that are, you know, close to the exits, clear exits, doors that work and things like that. That's normally what we do on a brand-new space or a fit-out as an example. In this case, she's just taking over the space and I'm more than happy to do that. And again, that improves life safety. It's just not something that's normally done when somebody just takes over spaces. You know, businesses change and if it's the same use, there's no triggering factor for any building official to go through it. So, I applaud you for considering that and I'm more than happy, again, to do that.
Okay.
I will also tell you that per state board regulations, I have to have a, a fire extinguisher in my premises and a smoke detector.
Right.
I can't get approval by them without it.
So, I went up there today and I tried to look in the window.
It's dark, yeah.
It was dark. What's the square footage here?
It is 12 by 14, so I believe it's like 156.
Okay, all right. And how many clients at once do you anticipate having?
I have one in, one out, one in, one out.
Okay, great, thanks.
Do you, do you plan on expanding to another manicurist or?
No. I'm a one-man show.
Okay, no, not a.
Or one-woman show, I should say.
So, that, that unit is empty right now?
Well, I had started putting some things in it before I realized I wasn't just going in to change my address and everything kind of had to halt. The only thing that was in there when I arrived was a sink.
Was the sink?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to open up the public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board for board discussion only. Yes, David?
Our package included DPW comments. There's like five miscellaneous comments, not reflected in the planning board comments. So, but it's just an existing, you know, I feel like that's, that's DPW overkill for the reuse. But I just wanted to throw it out that, whether we wanted to add that, that would just become a burden, I think, for the applicant, but, but, okay.
No. I, I saw that also. And if anything, that pertains to the owner of the building, okay? And so,
Well, it's, we don't like to ignore DPW comments.
No, but it was a little reach.
Yes, and this one seemed overkill for just moving in to a single room.
Okay, any other comments? I await the board's pleasure.
I'll make a motion that we approve 41...
Seventy-three?
Seventy-three. I can't remember my own writing here.
So, if we do that, I'd like to add, first of all, a normal condition for the taxes, that's not in there. And then, how do you feel about the rest of the board? About the, having them at least make sure that it's a safe space, I guess is what I should put it?
Well, Spencer's probably bored, so.
Yeah.
I have no problem adding that to my motion if you'd like that, no problem.
I just want to make sure that the building department understands that we're not being hired.
Now, this is something that I will send either myself or one of the building officials out and just ensure that the systems that are there, part of the original design and supposed to be there, are functioning. Things like batteries are replaced.
Yeah.
Smoke detectors are working.
Okay.
Fire extinguishers have been put up to date. But there's nothing that we would be looking to increase in the building. This is not a triggering factor at all.
And Michael wants to go in tomorrow to get his nails done.
Well, if you'd like to come tomorrow, that would be fine, but I would be at a different location until further notice.
But neither one of us can walk.
I would like to get some more men on my agenda.
Excuse me? So, what is the actual condition? How do you want to word it?
Well, what do you, how do you think I should wear it, Jason? You are?
Just a conditional upon approval of a life safety inspection by a building official.
Okay.
Must have life.
If it's a small space, it'll be quite simple.
Well, like I said, I have to have those two things in order to get them to sign off.
So, we have a motion by Peter and a second by Mike to approve case number 4173 with two conditions. The standard tax lien condition and must have a final life-saving equipment inspection.
Life safety inspection.
Life, life safety.
Yep.
I believe they save lives over there as well with the 360 something or other over there that's CBF.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? It is unanimous.
Excellent.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, there you go. I don't think I have much left of my nails, so.
You know what? I got a gallery one time fishing and a fishbone went up under my thumbnail. They had to take the nail and everything off. I keep these cut so short now. Thirty years ago. Okay, moving on to case... Moving on to case number 4174. A modification of special permit 3182 Walmart, Bowler Engineering. And I will have the clerk read the ad, please.
Thank you. Case number 4174. The Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 26th Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. On Monday, August 4th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. To hear the petition of Walmart requesting a special permit required to modify case 3182 and per section 20516 MC, use table D29 to construct in addition onto a retail store in a planned shopping center on the property of 300 Colony Place, shown as parcel 102000026008 of the assessor's map, dated January 1, 2024, in a MC zone. The petitioner or his or her representative or any other person interested and desiring to be heard on this request should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you. Seated on this will be Ms. Deliri, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Connor, and myself. Who will be presenting?
Good evening, Jim Cranston with Bowler Engineering, representing Walmart this evening. We're here before you tonight for a modification to an existing special permit that was granted back in 2003. That special permit was for a total ground floor area on the overall center of about 865,000 square feet. I think that special permit was required because of the variation of uses throughout the property. This proposed project is a small building expansion of approximately 3,000 square feet on the right side of the, the building. This is the survey that's shown up on the screen. It's probably tough to read. I actually can't read it either, there's a lot going on there. But it's on the north side of the building. There's pick, there's an existing pickup operation out there today with a canopy with 25 parking spaces today. Under this proposal, the canopy would be demolished. They're no longer doing the canopy. And what this expansion is for is for the staging of the customers' goods before it gets moved to their cars for delivery. So, it's not additional retail floor area. It's literally just shelving and refrigeration units for grocery and, and the dry retail goods. Lets them fulfill the orders more easily and stage it closer to where the pickup operation is happening. There's also some additional spaces proposed, 11 additional spaces for 36 in total. We did get planning board approval last month, unanimous approval, 5-0 vote. And we have a, a letter of recommendation for this modification. There are some conditions. We don't have any issues with the conditions. They make a lot of sense. So, I don't know if there's any questions for, for me tonight.
You were here for the beginning of this.
Let's check with the audience.
Yeah. All right.
So,
Go ahead, Michael.
Okay. Yeah, a couple of things. So, there's no food preparation on this side or anything?
No, it's everything that's already packaged up, pre, you know, preboxed, packaged up. It basically gets moved from the floor to the, the staging area.
And then, I noticed this, there's one, there is a small canopy just on the building itself, maybe four, five feet.
Sure.
The one thing I was noticing, I didn't see any bollards on, on both ends of that to protect those posts.
Oh, for the column?
Yeah. You got them on the end of the building, but not there. And I'm looking at it saying, geez, you know, probably should have those.
Yeah, I'm not sure how tight that area is. That, that is something we typically would implement if it's a close, a close call. If there's not a reveal there, or if, if there's not a reveal there, then putting bollards there would, would make a lot of sense.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's about the only thing. I, I looked it over, all the other things and, I mean, the other things would have been addressed when that was a unified permit, you know, originally with the.
Long time ago, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm fine.
Go right ahead.
So, I, I was up there and the signage is great, you know, directing people. And this might be a bit of a nit, but there's a lot of signs directing people to the pickup. There's no signs when they're done with the pickup saying exit pickup, which you might want to consider sending them out to Colony Village Drive so they're not going through the parking lot. I didn't see that when I was up there and I didn't see it on the plans.
Okay. Yeah, that's something we haven't been asked before at, at other sites, but, you know, you would think that if someone's familiar with the site and they live in the area, they know how, how to leave.
Yeah.
You know, if it's something that you feel adamant about, we could add it.
It's not that, it's not.
Okay. I know if I was shopping there, I'd want to leave the quickest route and not go through the parking lot.
Exactly. Get them out, just direct them away from the parking lot.
Right.
Probably only have to do it once to figure it out.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Just to understand the process, I have two questions. Does, does the client get out of his car and walk in and pick it up? Or do people bring it out to the car?
Sure, good, good question. So, same way it happens under the current operation, customers do not leave their car. When they get to their parking space, they go on the app or through the link and they notify the associate that they're there and they let them know what parking space number they're in. And then, the associate will come out. They're not allowed to actually even enter the building on that side. It's strictly for associates.
That's good, that, all does good.
It's all about convenience.
Yeah, because I was thinking of cross-traffic and, and people walking out.
And that's what, sorry.
The second question is, what, what is that JIB crane operation for?
I think that came up during the planning board meeting as well. Or were you the gentleman that asked? It's, um,
No, I'm a retired architect.
I mean, someone's reviewing the plans, which a lot of times people glance through it. So, the JIB crane is, it's a permanently mounted structure on the, on the building. And what it does, it allows easy replacement of the rooftop units so they don't have to bring in an actual massive crane. This contraption allows them to use a pulley system up using this crane that's permanently mounted on, on the building.
Is that just for this new addition? Or would equipment go to the main building?
I think it's being moved from its current location. It would, it would be for, I believe, the, the store itself. I'm not quite sure, but that's what a JIB crane is.
It has a purpose because I,
Correct.
It didn't strike me as, you know, I didn't know why you'd have it for this little grocery pickup area.
Yep.
And a final question is, one wall's quite high. So, it's, it doesn't, it's not all the way wraparound. It's kind of tall facing the parking lot. And then, I think it's shorter where the JIB thing is.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
There's one tall wall. I think the wall where the canopy is in the front door is,
Yeah.
is quite tall. And then, you turn the corner and on the backside, that wall doesn't continue. So, I just, do you know what the purpose of that extra tall wall is for?
I think it's just a branding wall and it's probably to, to mask the rooftop units, if I had to guess.
Okay, would, would it also have signage on it or not?
So, I, I believe the intent, so there's a sign on the side of the building today, right? The intent is to put one up similar on the same side. They would have to pursue a sign permit through the building department for that, but they would be looking to put it.
But otherwise, it's to screen mechanical equipment?
Right.
Pretty much. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I'm also, Pete, I'm also.
Okay, moving along. Have you all read the conditions? And everybody's satisfied with the conditions? I would like to add one more, that they don't start any motors or anything before 7:00 in the morning. Only be, during construction, only because they're pretty close to residential areas now. So, nothing before 7:00 AM?
Yeah, you don't want to wake them up.
That too.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve case 4174 with the six listed conditions and the one Mike spoke of.
Is there a second?
Sure, second.
I have a motion to approve case number 4174 slash 3182 with seven conditions. All those in favor? It is unanimous. You can build your building.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before us this evening? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.